The Swain County Board of Commissioners and Board of Educations Joint Work Session, April eighth, two thousand twenty-five, five, close to five, five oh five. You're under your license, sir.
Mr. Coler, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands as one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Except our items for discussion is the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget. So I need you guys have submitted some paperwork to us.
Yes.
I think we've all read over it. So if you kind of want to walk through that or let you guys take the floor on that.
I'd like to bring the expert to the, to the floor, if it would be okay with you. And that would be Stephanie Treadway, and I would like for her to be able to go quickly. Because to be very fair to her and to be fair to all of us, she does not feel well tonight. She's, she's here and you'll hear her struggling to breathe just a little bit. Okay, so I'm going, I'm going to have her sit over here.
You need to use this microphone.
Yeah. And everybody, please try to speak into a mic because this has been live streamed and, and so everybody can hear you.
And now I'll back up. Okay.
You're good.
Okay. So this is our proposal for the twenty-five, twenty-six local budget for the school. We're first requesting funding for our maintenance and our facility operations, which currently consists of a cost of a seven-person team. One program supervisor, a ground supervisor, two maintenance supervisors, electrical and HVAC, three groundskeepers, also our utilities, custodial supplies, maintenance supplies, repairs and maintenance to facilities, custodial maintenance contracts, and our debt service for our energy product, project. That was for our Schneider Energy Project that we did. I guess it's been four years ago now. That particular part of the budget request consists of salaries and fringe. The salaries, we've estimated a two percent increase from last year. That's, we don't know yet what the state is going to do. That's just our best projection. They're saying one and a half to two percent. Retirement, we figured a one percent increase, but our retirement rate is currently twenty-four point oh four percent. That is set by the state, so we're estimating it twenty-five percent. Health insurance, we factored in a three percent increase. That could go up even more because the health insurance program right now for the state is projecting some major losses coming up in the next two years. Workers' comp, twenty-three thousand five hundred fifty dollars. Charter payments, that's payments to charter schools. Whatever we receive in local funding has to be distributed back to charter schools as well as virtual schools, based on the number of Swain County students that are enrolled in those schools. And so it's a pro-rata portion of, of that funding. And that's estimated seventy thousand. Our Senovia contract, which is the bus GPS program that we use. Debt service for principal and interest, that is for the Energy Savings Grant or project that we had. Contract services of a hundred forty thousand, supplies of eighty-five. General repairs and maintenance, that's just the upkeep that our team does locally without hiring and out or contracting it out. License workshops, another twenty-four thousand, and fueling utilities, seven hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred, for a total of one million eight hundred sixty-three thousand three hundred forty-five dollars. The special requests that we're asking for, this has been funded by the county for the last three years, maybe four, I think this might be our fourth year. So this is for our reading assistance that we have at the elementary schools. We have two reading assistants at each elementary school. And the cost of that is a hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. So we'll continue to request that funding. Article forty-six funding, which funds our small projects team, which is a three-person team consisting of one supervisor and two, two crew members, for a total of two hundred thousand. And like I said, that would come from the article forty-six funding. This is a new request. We had it on the request last year. But this is for twenty percent for nurses and social workers. So prior to COVID, our nurses and social workers were employed eighty percent. During COVID, we did increase their employment to a hundred percent with ESRA funding. This current year, we're continuing to fund that because we had carryover funds and some federal fund sources because of having ESRA. So we've continued to fund that. And so that's a request from the county for next year. And that's a hundred and seven thousand eight hundred twenty-five, and that represents the twenty percent. A dean of students, we currently have one dean of students at an elementary school. Prior to COVID, we employed one. We, with ESRA funding, we did employ two dean of students. They perform the same, similar type of duties as an assistant principal, except for they're paid on teacher pay scale and not on an assistant principal pay scale. But they do assist the principal with every day. I guess with, what would you say, Mr. Sale?
I would call it the managerial pieces of the, of the school. A principal has multiple duties. Characterized them loosely into three categories. One is management, everyday books, buses, behavior, things like that. They're also, principals are also in charge of evaluation and making sure that teachers are performing up to expectation. And not just teachers, but all of their staff. And then the third category is instructional leadership. And it's difficult for a single principal at any school today, any school, to be able to perform all three of those duties with all of the requirements that are in place, with the level of varied behaviors that are, that are coming to them. Because we have seen a change in, in student behavior and an expectation, parent expectation, especially in the past five years. And then the evaluation process for teachers, and I'm not, I'm not going to make a short story long with this, but the evaluation process for teachers is, is pretty substantial. There are a certain number of visits to classrooms and paperwork and visits with teachers that have to, have to happen with each teacher. And it's, it's not insubstantial, the amount of time that it takes just to get the paperwork done. So what we're looking for are helpmates at the schools. And it will allow the principal to focus more on the instructional aspect of the school, which in my opinion is the most important part, while allowing someone else to deal with those management pieces, behavior, buses, routines and things like that. Now, what we're looking at doing this next year is mixing that up just a little bit by, by bringing in some, some learning coaches who will work along also as the dean of students. So they'll be sharing, the principal and the dean of students will be sharing more duties. The only thing that will solely have to be for the principal will be evaluation. Because you can't evaluate a teacher because you have. Okay, so I told you I was going to make, wasn't going to make a short story. But that's the purpose of those positions. It's becoming impossible to, to work in a school and do it effectively without that second hand.
What's the requirement to be a dean of student?
You have to have a teacher certification. That's all.
So no master's degree, nothing like that?
You don't have to have that, no, sir. However, we look at that position as the stepping stone.
Right.
Because in, in the past, it would have been an assistant principal, right? And, and you put individuals into those positions to train them for the next step. Well, we look at the dean of students as that also, particularly today.
Our past one is going to be the new future principal of high school.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And, and he was a dean of students until he got his license, and then he became an assistant principal. And so we're, we're looking at how we can build for the future also in that same way.
This is just a, just to show you what the historical local funding has been and where, how it's increased over the years, but also how inflation has increased. On the first column, of course, it shows the year, the amount of our request, what the current funding level is, and this is the, what your base funding level is, what the recurring piece is. And then the ADM is our average daily membership. That's the number of students in our school. And then the per student amount is the dollar amount per student from that local funding. This is just our historic low-well funding. We just always present this to show that the state continues to reduce our low-well funding. This used to be a funding source that could provide, you know, up to three positions. And now we can hardly get one or two positions out of that. And so, and it's showing that the per child amount of that funding has went from at the highest seventy-eight dollars per student down to thirty-nine dollars per student. Unfortunately, they weigh this funding based on local effort. It's once again a complicated calculation to come up with how the state looks at that effort. But what they do is they look at how much potential the county has to generate revenue. And then they look at how much that would be per student. And they do, they do some adjustments to that number. And then they look at what our tax rate is versus what the state average tax rate is. And they come up with that percent of county effort at twenty-four point eight percent. So that really just means that they're funding us at twenty-four point eight percent of what our, our low-well funding would otherwise be. This is just a comparison between other counties, some with similar ADM, which is number of students, and the amount per student funding that each of those counties has. I tried to get some that were low-well counties, some that also got impact aid funding, just so you could see a kind of a comparison. But our rank for effort is one hundredth in the state. But our ability to pay per the state is at thirty-six in the state. I wanted to present what we do receive from impact aid funding. This is the amount of funding that we receive from impact aid by application year. What they do is sometimes they don't fund a hundred percent of it in the current year. So we might, they might have some holdback and then we get that later on. But these are the amounts based on our application currently for twenty twenty-five of what our funding is, and that is two million eight hundred sixty-one thousand. We have seven hundred sixty-six federally impacted students, which has had a significant decline since two thousand eighteen. And the amount per student has gone up just because there has been some effort by Congress to, to fund that more. This is the amount of impact aid that we have received per fiscal year. So as you can see, for twenty twenty-four, we got all the back years where they had held back money. They went ahead and funded that up to what the hundred percent mark. And then this year, it'll go back down just to our regular amount for the year. We've only received currently fifty percent of that two point seven. So hopefully, we will get the other fifty percent this year. And that's based on, once again, seven hundred sixty-six students for federally impacted students and average daily membership of one thousand seven hundred seventy-three per our fifth month. The eight oh oh three amount is a per student amount. The eight oh oh two amount is based on land. So we get two different amounts for impact aid. This is just a diagram to show where impact aid funding, how it's kind of trickling off. But yet, the, our, our cost of maintenance is continuing to increase as our local funding is, is staying, is staying level. Any questions?
On the impact aid, you're on that slide?
Yeah.
Pretty steady being in the quantities. What's the driver on that?
We've seen a shift of students going back to Cherokee. So we just don't have the number of students mainly at East Elementary that were attending before. Most of it, the younger age students are, are going to Cherokee. And that's the only thing I can say about that.
Is there, my sister-in-law works up at Western over financial aid, and they have received a survey where they're seeing what they are calling the cliff of students. Is that something you guys are seeing? What I mean by that is graduation classes are going to be decreasing, class sizes are going to be decreasing. And they're contributing that to families all, instead of having four kids, having two kids or one kid. Is that something you guys are seeing as a trickle-down effect or?
I think part of ours is there's more options. You have more options as far as virtual schools, charter schools. And then also, I think, and Mr. Sale can speak to this, what the effect might be on the, the more increased path to graduation for high school students. That will probably start to impact us as well, where they can get on a more accelerated path to graduation. But right now, I think most of ours is just the options for education. It's no longer just public schools.
But, but I think, Tanner, that, I think that you're speaking truth because we're seeing a, a lower birth rate now than we have quite a while. We're seeing more and more young adults not even wanting to have children. So I think that that will become, that could become an issue. That may be one of the reasons that we have seen the smallest kindergarten class this year that we've seen in, in a while. And, and Tommy, you correct me if, if. What are our numbers for kindergarten like this year, like they were last year?
A little smaller.
A little smaller. Okay.
And one of the things that's huge, we have with a lot of our kids that were graduating, they're not standing. That's facts. So we don't have, when a population gets older, the need for schools is going to shield. Also, I think that's also.
I think you put, you, you need to put all of those into, into the mix. It's not a one-size-fits-all.
Right, right.
And you're talking about the cliff also. And it's not specifically about the number of, of students who will be enrolling in school in general. But we are, we are at a cliff right now with the number of teachers that are coming out post-secondary schools as well. There was a day, Tanner, when you would put a, a teacher job opening out and there would be six, seven, eight applicants. And today, we're thankful to get two and three. That's part of the change in education as well. But I need to remind you, because we have less students, doesn't mean we get to shut down the buildings. Still takes the same amount of heat, same amount of light, personnel. They don't know, the students don't show up, they don't, they don't show up in little packages so you can take them all out of one class. Okay.
Thanks a lot for the impact aid. Thank you for staying steady. I know that's just like a governmental program that can shift at any moment.
Stephanie, what are your thoughts on impact aid?
We've not heard of any threat to impact aid funding, but it is one that has to be reauthorized every year. So it's, it's always one that could be on the chopping block.
Stanley, could you go back to that local effort comparison slide?
Yep, that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I, I, we saw this last year. How can we increase the percent of effort if we're last, last in the state of North Carolina? What drives that? What, how can, how can we increase our percent of effort?
Really just by our per student funding. That, that's the bottom line. And what they do is they compare it all to state average. Everything is, is driven by state average. But it really is, comes down to more funding per student. The tax rate, once again, that unfortunately comes into this calculation. Nobody wants to have tax increase, I mean.
We had a slight tax increase, didn't we, no? Should that not have raised that up a little bit?
And it might for next year, yeah.
But what might get us is, they, they did comparison probably across one hundred counties.
Yeah, they do.
Those counties probably had slight tax increases as well.
That's true.
And so that might, you know, the average is going to get you. I'm sure a lot of it would be eighty percent of the government. Probably got a larger tax base now.
And that's what I was thinking too, but they got us ranked at thirty-sixth.
As ability to pay. And what they look at there is basically our tax rate at thirty-six cents per hundred. Forty-one now. And then there, this one, so that's, this calculation is based on the old one because they're a year behind on this calculation. But, but the state average is well above fifty-one percent.
I think, again, like you're saying though, I mean, that, I think it's one of the biggest reasons is we're not comparable to a lot of these places because we do not have the last tax base. But, but I don't think Raleigh sees that. I don't think that.
So yeah, they rank us thirty-sixth on ability to pay.
Right, they're using that.
And they're, they're nearly done with our per student amount.
Exactly, yeah.
And so we're extremely comparable then. They've got a lot of federal land as well.
Is our tax rate about as higher than ours?
Their tax rate's higher, but their body sizes are lower. It's about fifty-one.
They're at fifty-one percent.
We're at forty-one.
And we're seeing, based on the new projections that are coming out for low-well, a lot of districts got major decreases in their low-well funding. We just didn't see it because ours is just not that high to begin with. But some are seeing upwards of eight hundred thousand decrease in their low-well funding, so.
And this is based just on the local allocation, like the additional.
Correct, yeah. I think it's the way that it's coded, you know, as to where, if it's the base allocation versus a, a special appropriation.
Yeah, because I think we talked about if we could show the impact aid on top of the local funding because we get that impact aid because of the low tax, taxable land that we have. But I don't know if that would even be possible, you know?
We tried that several years ago, and, but I mean, it's not to say we couldn't try again.
I'm close already to being able to access a tourism-based tax. Because I know that that was relative on how much we taxed. That's what was told last year.
You're talking about the lodging tax?
Yeah, like a tourism tax, occupancy tax and accessing any of those funds. Because you go to Myrtle Beach, you go to South Carolina, everybody pays a tourism tax. I think last year I looked at it as sixty percent of houses or something like that. It's like, or Airbnb or some sort of tourism-based occupancy thing that we're just not able to access additional tax revenue. And I think it was a choice, please, because I do not know, that we, the state has to give us access to that, what is needed. Because I think that's such a trickle-down effect that you could then tax it at a higher rate because its taxes are pushed down to business, just like they are for any of us.
Lottie, correct me if I'm wrong, we would have to have legislation correction through that. So we would have to have change in legislation through the, the, the lodging tax before we could.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, it's hooked into all counties, not just like certain, they won't let a county have to go across the board.
Yeah.
North Carolina, so a lot of these other, other cities, and they, they could care less because they've got enough taxable income coming in anyway, so.
So it's a North Carolinian issue?
It's a North Carolinian. And we've talked to representatives several times about it. And I think we even, well, I know that we got the resolution about a homestead tax at one time and tried to get some of that government. But I, I don't know, I don't know that unless you get a bunch more people on board, I don't know if it ever happens. One of them thinks. I mean, I think all the funding ought to come from tourism. I mean, if, if that's your main source of revenue, then that's where your funding ought to come from. North Carolina's not got that figured out. Tennessee's got it figured out pretty good.
Other states.
You gotta pitch a forge and see how much, how much of that money is coming through that tourism. That's where, that's where all that money's funded. Funded a lot of their fire departments in the MS and search reports, that's where it's coming from. I'd love to see it.
Questions, anyone? I, I really need to draw attention to a couple of those nurses and social workers. And I don't want to say that one part is more important than the other. But I'm struggling to find today whenever kids don't need a nurse. And if we could really use some support and some help on that, social workers. And let me go back to nurses. At, at one of our elementary schools last month, a nurse saw four hundred different students across the month. At the other, it was just under three, just under four hundred. So yeah, that's, that's a wow, you know? And I'm sure that they're, they're not all critical illnesses. And they can, they can treat the student with whatever needs to happen. Sometimes a wet paper towel or a Band-Aid does a lot of good. But they still need to be seen, taken care of. Social workers at the elementary schools particularly are, are not just, just sitting around. First of all, they have to take care of attendance letters and, and monitor attendance needs. But they're also in the classroom, in every classroom, once every two weeks, teaching the class. So, and one of the reasons is our students need that. But the other reason is that gives our elementary school teachers an opportunity to have a longer planning period than they had maybe three, four years ago. So those positions are pretty critical for us. We're talking about declining enrollment in, in Swain County for the reasons that we mentioned already. We're already beginning to see the impact of that in funding from Raleigh. Our planning allocation for the next school year for teacher assistance has been low to the point where we will have to fund a teacher assistant locally to keep them now. Because they, they fund you based on the number of students that you got in classes. We've lost half a teaching position as well. I don't know which half of the teacher we don't need. But that's going to be funding that's going to have to be recovered somehow. And, and while I, I am absolutely in support of, of teacher pay raises, and they're talking about that pretty healthily right now in Raleigh. When they raise teacher salary, that only covers teachers in a particular fund source. And then it's our job to match that in other fund sources. And the only place that we have to do that is through our local funding or impact aid. And so all of these, all of these numbers are critical for us. But I also know that you have limits in what you can do. So as you're looking at it, please help us take care of our kids. Keep that at your heart, and I know that you do. Okay?
Come on, that's good. You've got something next?
I was going to bring you up to, to speed if, if you would like very quickly on where we are with the middle school project. The school board formally approved LS3P as our. The school board formally approved LS three P as our architect now. That contract is is taken care of and in place. We're working on the contract with Vanoy and moving forward on that very quickly. I would be pleased to sit down with you at at any point that you want to and explain the pieces of those contracts. We we pushed them and their fees beyond what I thought we were going to be able to to push. And they have really offered us some very good deals that I'm pleased with. Our inter-local agreement, you remember that document that you voted on and board voted on? There's a line in there that says that any change orders that are that are above ten thousand dollars need to come to you. Or our board and our board for approval. And we've been speaking with some of the folks at Vanoy about the limitations that that will, that will create. And we're going to be bringing an amendment to that inter-local to raise that to ninety thousand dollars. The right now, that is the limit in our board policies that the superintendent has access to approve. And so the board has said to keep it there, okay? But that would keep us from coming to you all the time for every change order. Because when you're talking about a fifty million dollar, how many change orders that are more than fifty thousand dollars are you probably going to be looking at over time? Okay, all right. So we'll be bringing that to you shortly. We've had some good conversations about water and sewer with different people. I shared with Kevin an opportunity that may be stirring in Washington through impact, fairly impacted construction. And this particular bill has been represented at both the Senate and at the House. And it would bring the opportunity for us to to apply for or to compete for grant money for construction. And I don't see some of the limitations on that that we have with the construction grant that we have gotten through the state. We want to keep our eye on that. I've spoken with Lake Silver about that this week. And I intend to speak with the field rep for Tom Tillis as well and see if we can get some support on that. But you might want to look at that just to have it in mind. And then if you have friends, perhaps reach out to them for support, okay? Those are the the primary, primary pieces. We're looking at water and sewer and how to continue to pursue funding on that. I have a letter that I sent out this afternoon to Senator Corbin and Representative Clampett, asking again for that ten million dollars. And explaining to them how critical that is because we continue to face significant needs in that area. As far as I'm concerned, those are the major pieces that I wanted to make sure that you're aware of just for communication. Do y'all have any questions?
And to get that sewer out of the way, will it be about it?
I would agree. And in that that letter that I wrote today, I I emphasize that, that we really need to have this funding in place now. So that the town can have the money to work with. That that's the goal because they're, they're, they're doing, in my opinion, they're doing everything that they can do right now with the fund sources that they have. And I've promised them and I've promised you that we will continue to pursue that. We need that funding now or we're going to see a a real critical issue in the not-too-distant future.
One of the things I was talking about, Michelle, was about the pay within, when we get invoice, we need to pay within thirty days. And I think it may go through from the county into our budget, so.
What what I was talking about is we have a thirty-day turnaround from a pay app to cutting a check and getting it to the company or to get it to Vanoy. And we have the ability to draw money down from the state ahead of time based on a level of anticipation. But we need to make sure that when we get that pay app in, that we can get that to Cali so that Cali can then do her magic and then we can get that to to Vanoy. And thirty days is our limit on.
Thirty days?
Yeah, or we'll be, we'll be looking at a a one and a half percent, essentially one and a half percent finance draw. I don't think that's, Stephanie doesn't think that that's. Thank you for reminding. Anything else tonight, any questions, thoughts, anyone?
I think we're good, I may work on them. Have to do calculations, see where we're at, or a lot of it. Kind of say where we're at and what we can do, what we can't do.
You're just going to give us a check tonight?
Bring the check. But you know, we're in support of you guys, and I know you guys are in support of us, and we're trying to make this thing work together. We got the best senior banging community in the county. So I know that there's a lot of uncertainties after our federal, federal monies right now, and the state's going to take over some of that probably. And I know how the state is, they're not really good at taking over anything over money.
They're real good at telling us.
They're real good at giving you another job, not paying for. But we'll, we'll, like I said, we've got several more budgets, things that we got to do, sit down, hash some of that stuff out. We have any questions?
Yes, any time, any time, okay? We appreciate you all, thank you. That's all we have.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. This time I'll take most to a John.
Motion.
It's second.
Yeah, we will take.
Motion. I guess. Second.